First item, we will have a moment of silence for those who may have passed away recently. Anyone you want to remember, also think about the people in Europe who are going through a terrible time. We'll take a, have a moment of silence. Okay, and according to the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all town commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda that outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Also, does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote. Everyone I think has a copy of the agenda, and the first item is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Still till tomorrow under the, things can be good. Through the field?
Vote without anybody being, attending remotely, I think we're good to do it just all at once.
Okay. Okay, any, uh, comments from any Board members? On favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, next item is a consent agenda to include a Board vote on the items listed in this section. Shannon, you want to explain everything?
This is on, thank you Mayor, Board members. I didn't just get this, there we go, get the presentation started, so you have the consent agenda that's before you now, there's four items, two are, the first two are relatively straightforward business items, not necessarily budget specific, but since the Board was meeting, we thought go ahead and add it to the packet. The second two are just policies that are required by the federal government related to the rule, the rule changes in the spending of the ARPA money. We don't necessarily anticipate using these policies, but they were a requirement by the federal government, so they're included in your consent packets. And then if that is acceptable to you all, we'll move into the budget presentation.
I have a question. On these bank authorization forms, we have a separate account for the Christmas fund. Any idea of the balance in that?
My understanding, it's a little over 50,000, 51,000, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Is that the same fund that I've heard described as the police benevolence fund?
Yes.
Does that include money raised by the police department with the calendar?
I believe that's what the calendar check is, I'm not sure.
Okay, how much money did the calendar raise?
Right here, what was it?
Just curious.
A thousand dollars, I think, I think that is a check for, the calendar company has changed hands, traditionally we had a check for, I think it was a thousand dollars, I think it was less this year for some reason.
Yeah.
I think it was five hundred this year.
And are the proceeds of that earmarked for something in particular?
Nope.
Is there a reason we do it? I'm just curious, I haven't seen something like that in a long time.
The calendar?
Yes, sir, with the ads on it for merchants?
It's a great PR store, we hand them out to folks, we, it's a great way to get our image and our brand out there, and we make money.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a, it's amount, they, you know, the advertiser pretty much cover most of the cost of calendar, printing, things like that, and then they give the small amount after.
Okay, alright.
To me, that's secondary, I don't care about making money off of it, it's more of us having, again, something that we can, you can say, hey, here's something representing the Woodfin Police Department, and see if it kind of works.
Okay, thank you.
How much do the, the folks that are advertising the businesses, what do they have to pay for?
Cost of ads vary, and we have nothing to do with soliciting the ad, that's all run by the company, so I don't know what they pay for the ads, that's all they're doing. The company just comes to us and says, hey, you want to do the counter, we say yes or no, we send them a picture, they send us counters, that's pretty much it. They, they do all the, going around town, talking to businesses and soliciting those ads.
We, we do anticipate at a future date, bringing a discussion before the Board about the future of that fund, and so that is something that we do anticipate talking about more in the coming months.
On the, on the trucks, are we expecting to get much, if anything, from the sale of those? I mean, my understanding was they're both essentially useless at this point.
Yeah.
So, so the, the approval surplus, both trucks are on the amendment today, one was already offline because of, you know, the end of the line, the other one they're still using is we'll get the replacement review, we just wanted to get authorization. As soon as we receive the replacement, we'll, we'll place that second truck on the wheel. You never know what you're gonna get, we, the backhoe, the old backhoe that we surplus several months ago, Ronnie mentioned earlier today, it sold for 17,200 dollars.
Wow.
That's it, it burns on.
Okay.
So, we, we were expecting three with a thousand dollars out of that.
Yeah.
About seven, so.
Okay.
Wow.
Just a bit of mystery on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you, are you, was there a vote on the consent agenda?
Any other questions or comments from anybody? Okay, you've heard all of the, the four items on the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item, moving on, do you, new business, item number one, presentation and discussion regarding the FY 2023 budget matters.
I'm just gonna get us kicked off, so we're gonna start, we're gonna actually share the presentation this morning, I'm just gonna kinda get us started, and then Sherri's gonna take over and talk about where we are in the budget planning process, and then also talk about the, the rule change related to the ARPA funds and the related budget ordinance amendments that are proposed, that are included in your packets for this afternoon. Then Adrian's gonna talk about the stormwater management plan and some of the associated budget costs with that, that's gonna be one of the bigger items, and so it's definitely something that needs a little bit more information, taking a little bit more time on your agenda today to cover, and then I'm gonna wrap things up by talking about some other capital projects and needs, so I'm gonna turn it over to Sherri to get started unless you have any questions for me. Okay, thank you.
I hope everybody at least got a chance to eat part of your lunch and...
Cookie was good.
I haven't tried mine yet, but I'm looking forward to that. So, so last month, we had a discussion about our five-year financial forecast, we talked about fund balance and debt capacity, and sort of kicked off our budget process for this year. Today, we're gonna focus on a five-year capital improvement plan, that'll be sort of the tail end of the discussion today, and then major programs to include stormwater and the ARP funds, and there'll be some, we're gonna ask for some guidance from the Board around those areas. As you recall, I presented a similar slide last month, next month, there is another budget workshop, the first Tuesday of the month, May 3rd, and we'll be winding up our proposed budget for the Board's consideration for next year, we'll present the fee schedule, talk about proposed changes related to that, our paying classification plan, proposed COLA adjustments, and then expansion requests, anything that is not currently in today's operating budget that we feel we need to add next year, we'll discuss and request the Board's direction on those items. So for today, we had promised to have another detailed discussion about the ARPA, American Recovery Plan Act funds. As the Board is aware, we were granted $2,140,000, a little better than that, through this fund, and just to sort of recap, a history of the ARPA funds, the Treasury formally launched this grant program in May of last year, we received our first of two deposits, a little over a million dollars, a million seventy thousand last July. The Board was asked to approve, and did approve, a preliminary budget related to these funds. At that time, there were five pretty strict categories for approved spending of the funds, and Eric Hardy, the town administrator at that time, solicited priority requests from the Board, the public, and staff to try to determine how best to spend these funds and propose, and, and we adopted that budget. The Treasury's final rule, which tweaked the spending requirements for the money and added some additional flexibility around lost revenue and the standard exemption that added so much more flexibility for towns to be able to really spend this money on true needs of, of the town, came out in January of this year. So what we are requesting today, and I'll go through some of the details of why, is that the Board consider electing the standard deduction allowance under the revenue replacement category, and undoing the original budget that we adopted. We've already spent a portion of this money in our report, most every month, on where we are to date, you know, we bought a sign for out front, we were just talking about the one that needs to be repaired, and we, we, the biggest expenditure was the Cofford Dam, an unexpected expenditure related to the Silverline Park project, that was 280,000, and there were some others that we'll go over in detail, and we'll have to amend our general fund budget to, to move those expenditures there if, if the proposed standard allowance is accepted by the Board today. So that's just a timeline of, of where we are, and the next, I don't have it on here, but the next allotment of, in our final payment, another million dollars should come to the town, we're anticipating July of this year. These are the four categories, the, the Treasury narrowed the categories, but allowed much broader application in each with the final rule. We're requesting that you consider electing, under the revenue replacement, the $10 million standard allowance, so you can elect up to that amount, our grant obviously falls well below that threshold, and I'll go over some reasons for that, why, I included in your packet this weekend, some reading, a blog from the school government, that kinda goes through the theory of why that's a good reason, and the, and explained why it allows so much additional flexibility for the Board to spend the ARPA money on priorities that relate to any general government matter, that you'd be allowed to spend town funds on otherwise, not just related to the categories specified under the grant. Our original budget ordinance looked like this, we, we budgeted the revenue of 2,140,000, and then expenditures in the various categories listed. We have spent money in all the numbers that are blue, and the others, we have not had any spending to date, but this was the old budget, we're asking today, and the, the first budget amendment ordinance that's before you for consideration undoes, undoes this Spending to date, I mentioned the town hall sign, we've spent 25,000, or 23,528, there's another 2,500 to 3,000 for the installation and hookup and permitting to install the sign, so we've included that in this amount. The comprehensive plan, there was some spending related to the development and professional services to facilitate our, our comprehensive plan for 2022. Then, under stormwater management, we paid some Land O'Sky and folks to help develop our proposed stormwater plan for the town. The police contracted with LexiPol to purchase some policy development services to update all the law enforcement policy and regulations around what they do every day for the town, which is a, an area of high liability, and you have to have sound current policies.
Ask a quick question about that? Those are very generic policies, do we have work underway to make those specific to, to our town and to our department?
Yes, I'll go over the high level, and if you have specific questions, the Chief can answer for you, but basically LexiPol takes a handful of policies every, every week or two and crafts those to suit Woodfin, the Chief and his supervisory staff review those and make the edits to make it match our procedures, and then send it back to LexiPol for their attorneys to review, so that they're compliant with North Carolina law. Is that pretty accurate?
You push that one on the head.
Thank you. So, so yeah, they, they come out with their generic best practice, we make it our own, and then they do a final review, so, so that we're not, we're legally compliant with all the rules. And then finally, the, and that's way out of alignment, I don't know how that happened, the Cofford Dam at the Silverline Park was a $280,000 expenditure, and the original budget funded a portion, 25% of our project manager's budget, in that he does work for the park, and, and expenditures which were allowable at the time of the original adoption of this budget under the ARPA grant or grant rules. So that's what we've spent to date, we're obligated to that $440,000 number, so the second budget amendment ordinance that is before you today basically moves the appropriated budget to the general fund or the parks capital project fund for these expenditures that had previously been approved, and we've obligated ourselves to the spending. So, what, in result of, if, if the Board approves electing the standard allowance, is, you'd make that election today, we would need to adopt the new ARPA project budget, which the School of Government's recommendation for small government units is that we basically supplant our general fund salary and benefit lines, in, in an amount that would spend up the $2,140,000. That relieves that spending from the general fund, so you're not moving the grant fund to the general fund, but in a sense, it's sort of a shell game, in that you would, you would relieve the general fund of all those expenses that are compliant with the grant, and you would have broad discretion to reappropriate that same amount of money for anything that the Board deems a priority that is compliant with, anything you normally spend money on for, for general government purposes.
What would happen if we didn't spend it? Does it go into the general fund?
It remains in your fund balance.
Okay, got it.
It becomes town funds, part of the general fund, if you appropriate money for the priorities that we recommend today, then it would, we budget it, if you decide you want to consider your options and really weigh what the, the priorities and the, you know, what you'd like to spend this on, then it just becomes part of, at the end of the day, fund balance.
What's, what's the process been? Has it been through Board motions to allocate money, like for the Cofford Dam, and as we move forward, how, what's the process like to say, we want to spend X on Y?
So we, we, you have to appropriate budget for anything we spend money on through a budget ordinance, and adopt it like you, similar process to adopting your budget every year, but it's, it's through, we, we can do that at any public meeting.
And if we have a suggestion or idea, we start the routing through you, or?
Or Shannon, either.
Okay, how do you, okay, because there is one that I...
And we'll talk about that today, we're gonna give the Board a chance to make any suggestions or, or discuss that, however you'd like to.
Okay.
So if, you, the School of Government blog that I sent out basically says that this is recommended because it provides maximum flexibility to the town, it minimizes reporting, the reason they recommend we budget payroll dollars, and I, in, in your budget amendment, I listed salary and FICA taxes because that was enough to basically use up all the, the $2 million that we had. We report on that on a regular basis to the state, to the feds, we already have all the county in place, so the reporting requirements that would require staff time or additional staff is, is cut to a minimum because we already do that. We, we have to decide before April 30th, which is our first report that is due to the Treasury, what we're gonna do with this money. So, if, if we elect the standard deduction, it's, it's irrevocable, if we do not elect it by the time we file this first report, that is also irrevocable. You can stick to the spending categories that are prescribed under the grant, it's not recommended, there's lots of project reporting for a number of years that would be required, and be very cumbersome on staff, and, and really, this, this way, it just gives the Board so much more discretion on how you decide to spend the money. So, I attempted to just kinda sketch out the process that we would have to use to accomplish this, since we already have a budget in place, is that the Board elects to make this, use this standard allowance under the revenue replacement category, then we adopt the budget ordinance that is before you today, that reverses the old budget and puts a new budget in place, and I just penciled in salary and benefit spending categories. We also adopt a budget amendment to take care of the spending that we've had to date under the old budget, and we, the, the next two bullets on the bottom of the screen are basically internal, I would have to do journal entries in our accounting system to move the expenditures that already posted that fund to the general fund and the project fund to get that off the grant books, and then the same thing at the end of, at the end of April, I do a journal entry to move all the salary and tax expenditures to date to the grant fund, and then I'll do another one probably around the end of the fiscal year to take up the remaining grant funds, and we file a report, and we're, we're basically done, after a couple of, our next report would be due a year from this April. So the, the net savings in the general fund, and I use the word savings because we're, we're leaving the general fund of a good, we're a service agency, so a lot of our general fund spending obligations are for salary and benefits and taxes related to that, we're moving a lot of that to the grant fund, so those funds will now be available in the general fund for the Board to appropriate. If you're just measuring grant dollars, that equals 1,700,000, and that is the 2.14 that we received under the grant, less the 400 and odd dollar amount that we have obligated ourselves to spend to date, leaves you with 1.7 for you all to decide how to reappropriate those funds. Anybody have questions so far?
I was wondering, this morning we got an email from Shannon about the possibility of the fine on the stormwater, nearly 14,000, I was just wondering if we should go ahead and add that to, no, okay.
No.
Okay.
Adrian addressed that, but in, in a nutshell, the, when the fine, when the state sent their letter of censure, there was a, a lot of stuff that they left out of the timeline, we responded and requested that they...
Wait, wait, I saw it, but what if they don't?
And the date was wrong on, that was done in February, it wasn't March.
Okay.
On that last form that I signed at the end, I don't know how March got in there, but...
Okay.
And we, we, we discussed it with the Mayor and felt like it was, we'll have a good chance in getting out of that.
Okay.
Fine. They basically said we didn't respond for a year, and that wasn't true, and Adrian had a lot of documentation that she provided and showed otherwise. Does that sound right? So, if the first order of business is if the Board, you don't have to do any, you don't have to vote formally on electing the standard allowance, it's just if that's the Board's consensus, and, and we'll consider the first budget ordinance, that's in your packet, it is the one that undoes the original budget and reappropriates expenditures in the grant fund for salary and wage and related tax benefit. And just procedurally, we, we have in here to vote on these two ordinances, and then we're gonna go over what else was in the, the, the previous grant budget that the Board should consider as priorities, and what those amounts were, and then we'll talk about staff recommendations on the 1.7 that, that is left, but it'll get to the Board to determine how we move forward with that. So Mr. Mayor, if we could consider this first ordinance and take a vote on that?
Any questions or comments from anybody? Well, I'll entertain a motion.
That we adopt the budget ordinance 2022-05-04-01.
A second?
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the next ordinance for the Board's consideration appropriates budget for the items that we have spent or have POs obligating ourself to, under the previous grant ordinance. Most of those expenditures will flow to the general fund, the $280,000 Cofford Grant expenditure will go to the capital projects fund and be reported under the Silverline Park budget in that fund, and it's illustrated that way in this ordinance.
Have a motion on list ordinance, proposed ordinance?
Move that we approve budget ordinance 2022-05-04-02.
Have a second?
You do, second.
Any discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say, motion carries.
Thank you. So, I'm, I'm sure the question on everyone's mind is, is what do we do with the newly available 1,700, basically 50 dollars? In the old ordinance, we had a substantial portion of the funds allotted for stormwater improvements and to develop that stormwater plan, and it goes along with the question Ronnie had, the state has required that our MS4 permit be addressed and all the things to be compliant, and because that is a, we, we feel will be a high-ticket item, and there are lots of components to that, we're, we're doing a pretty detailed presentation to the Board, Adrian and Shannon have developed, and, and that'll be right after this discussion. Town hall renovation and replacement, I'm gonna go to the next slide, in the original ordinance for this fund, we had $937,000 budgeted for stormwater improvements, we had $100,000 in the budget for a feasibility study for town hall, we, we have basically outgrown this facility, there are some issues with the, the built, the structure itself, and Shannon's gonna talk about those needs and, and estimated budget numbers and an approach for that project at, at the end of this, when we get to capital improvements, but we wanted to make the Board aware of where we were in the old, and if, and it'll be up to you to decide if you keep that as a priority and reallocate funds or not for each of these things that were included before. Parks and Greenways, we had 351,000 in there, part of it was for stormwater improvements, and $200,000 of that money was for broadband internet service in our parks. Broadband was one of the categories that allow, where there was allowable spending, there hasn't been a public outcry for internet service in the parks, but we thought that was a decent idea, and, and that's why it was in the original budget. It's not considered one of the top priorities of the town, but it would be a, nice to have... It's not considered one of the top priorities of the town, but it would be a nice to have item. Sanitation, we're going to talk later about rollout carts. There's some new information regarding pricing. This fit into the grant in our initial discussions because health and safety issues with our sanitation crews, picking up bags and things that may have needles or glass. We've had, in the last five years, four instances where folks have been stuck with needles and we'd have to get them, you know, they'd have to go for medical treatment to make sure there was no issues with that and things of that nature. The, there is a cost associated with the rollout carts and a portion of that can be grant funded, but we'll talk about that a little later also. And then street improvements, the, the board has already authorized some capital spending related to streets. We're very behind the eight ball and the need for street improvements. And we actually got our bids back today and had some decent news that I'm sure Luke will mention a little later on those. So that's where we were, that was the big ticket items in the original ARPA budget. The capital improvement plan, there's a printout, the legal size sheet that is in front of you today is our working document of the town's capital plan. These numbers change periodically, so they're not written in stone. It's just for us to track and our best estimate of where we are with larger ticket expenditures over the next five to six years. So that's been updated with the most recent information that we have and we'll go over most of those items today as we go through the presentation. The Silverline building will be up for discussion. We had a detailed parks discussion, presentation in our last meeting, so we won't go through most of those details again today, but we will address the Silverline Park building. I know a number of commissioners have had questions and most of you've been over and toured that facility. Facilities and grounds, I've already touched on town hall, the salt storage bin, we'll have some pictures and Shannon's going to talk about that at the end, as well as the Taylor Street culvert. It's not a dollar amount in the budget, but it's just on the radar that it will likely be a larger ticket item at some point in the future. Vehicles and equipment, these are all in our capital budget and in the sanitation rollout carts, we've discussed and we'll conclude with street improvements and infrastructure. Any questions from the board?
In previous presentations, the trash cart number was much bigger. Am I recalling that correctly?
Uh.
Originally, wasn't there a $400,000 tag on that?
The cost was more.
I'm sorry?
The total cost for the rollout is closer to 400, but that was what was allocated.
I understand, okay.
That was allocated in the grant ordinance. We had an additional 250,000, I think, in the general fund for, so there are trash carts and then there are recycling carts that were proposed to be implemented this year, but because of budget and grants, items didn't materialize the way we had originally expected, so we postponed the decision to implement this. And then the new board had never had a chance to really weigh in on whether or not you want to commit to that level of spending for trash service. We'll have that discussion a little bit later.
Shannon, do you think we should entertain a thought or work on maybe an ordinance that if a bag of garbage is set out that the town wouldn't pick it up unless it's in a container of some sort to help protect their workers from getting stabbed?
I think it would be a great idea to review our policy around that and if it's not up to par, if we don't have one, to develop that and have that on our website and available for Johnny's folks to maybe hand out to folks if they're not doing a good job of containing their trash so that we try to minimize the risk to our staff.
Right, right. I just thought maybe protect their workers a little bit.
I'm not sure what we have on our books in that area, but we can look into that. That's a great idea.
Will the new trucks have lifts to pick up the barrels that we have?
That's actually the delay and took, it's, they gave us three weeks for the first one and then first of June is they're installing those lifts on the back to actually lift the, and it'll work whether we continue with folks providing their own containers and we dump those or if we go to the carts.
The only thing I ask is I've seen the trash guys and I have a big barrel. They reach in and take each individual bag and hopefully that it won't be necessary in the future.
These new trucks have a lift on the back.
Good, 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 good. Thanks.
They'll have the option, if there's just a bag laying there, they could toss it in, but if it's in a container, they can actually sit it on there and.
Good.
It'll lift it up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Adrian who's going to begin our stormwater budget
So as Sherry mentioned several times in her presentation, stormwater is a big deal. And so I'm going to go over our permit and the requirements of that and the implications for the budget based on those requirements. So just a little bit of a background on MS4 permits. So an MS4, MS4 stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. So it's a system of conveyances to collect and transport stormwater runoff. The permit regulates discharges of stormwater to surface waters from a publicly owned and operated stormwater collection system. The program was initiated through the Clean Water Act and the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System delegated to the state through the North Carolina Department of Environmental DEQ defines urbanized areas and if localities are located within those urbanized area, they are required to have a permit. And Woodfin is located in one of those defined urbanized areas. So Woodfin's permit controls, limits and monitors stormwater runoff from portion of, from our MS4 to a portion of French Broad River and Beaver Dam Creek. The implementation requirements of the program include implementation of a stormwater management plan, an annual performance evaluation from that plan sent to the state each year, adequate legal mechanisms to regulate the stormwater runoff, maintenance of written procedures for implementation of the plan. And the key thing I wanted to point out here was the permit requires adequate funding and staffing to implement and manage the provisions of the stormwater management So compliance with the permit includes six minimum control measures. They're listed here on the screen. Public education outreach, public involvement participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction and post-construction site runoff controls and pollution prevention for municipal operations. And I'll get into that a little bit more here in a minute. So compliance and liability with the permit, the concerns are, as we've touched on, and I'm glad to answer any questions you might have about where we stand with that, noncompliance constitutes violation of the Clean Water Act and is subject to civil penalties of not more than $25,000 per violation. That may result in permit termination, revocation, or denial of permit renewal. The permits are for five years and so ours just expired at the end of 2021. We've submitted a new application to the state and are awaiting a status on that application. So they could relinquish authority to discharge runoff from our MS4 to the surface waters that are regulated. So the efforts towards compliance at this point are, we've submitted a draft stormwater management plan to the state in first of the year. So we're waiting on response from that. And we've also submitted, as I mentioned, the permit application for the new permit to begin this year. Land of Sky Regional Council completed inventory mapping of our current infrastructure for stormwater and we are looking at options to, to take that data and prioritize future upgrades to that system that will be required. We are reviewing the two regulatory mechanisms to, for post-construction stormwater runoff and I'll explain that a little bit more in a minute. So we're looking at an ordinance for post-construction stormwater runoff and illicit discharge. And we are also working on implementation plan for year one of the stormwater management plan that we've submitted to the state. So the year one goals and back to those six minimum measures, I've just provided some examples of what those goals, what our objectives are towards those six minimum measures for each measure. So we have public education outreach and involvement and participation. They kind of go hand in hand, but just some examples of the things that we plan to do in year one is to create some literature and brochures for public inspections so we can get the education out there about the importance of stormwater and stormwater runoff. We need to provide a hotline and document the activities around that hotline so we can receive complaints to a dedicated line and staff can handle those complaints. And we need to create and maintain a website page dedicated to stormwater. So those are examples for those two minimum measures. For the third minimum measure, illicit detection, discharge detection and elimination, which we like to call IDDE for short, we need to create a plan and standard operating procedures for inspections for staff to handle those inspections each year. Construction site runoff controls, measure number four, that is pre-constru, during construction stormwater runoff control. And that is handled by Bunkin County. Sedimentation and erosion control, and we don't have any plans to bring that in house right now, so we're going to leave that as it is. The state recognizes that in our, in our current permit. Post-construction site runoff controls, that's the stormwater permitting for after construction stormwater runoff. That is also handled by Bunkin County currently, but that's something we would like to bring in house so we can be more compliant with the requirements of the permit. So as I mentioned, we're working on review and adoption for a stormwater management ordinance. And we also need to create standardized tracking and documentation procedures around that for staff so we can bring that in house. And then finally, measure number six, pollution prevention and good housekeeping is all around the control of runoff of municipal facilities. So we need to create an inventory of all our facilities and again, create standard operating procedures for inspections and maintenance of those facilities. A lot of compliance with the permit is around the documentation of our activities towards compliance with these measures and the state will require it. They do an audit one time in the five-year permit, but we also have to submit yearly annual self-assessments of the progress we're making. And so we need that documentation to prove that we're in compliant with the requirements. So the reason we're here today, the budget impacts, so back to the six minimum measures and kind of covering the examples I just told you of the ways we can be in compliance with those measures includes the addition of a stormwater administrator. Back to the original slide of the requirement that we fund and staff the program. So with the salary of that position and benefits plus the efforts towards the six minimum measures, that comes to a little over $100,000 each year. In addition to the startup, for the startup program costs and future CIP costs, I mentioned the prioritization of the inventory so we'll know what kind of capital costs we're looking at for the future. So we've included that in the budget estimates for this fiscal year. The consultant costs for ordinance development, we're already working on that with a consultant. So this, that contract remains about $20,000 for completion of ordinance review and adoption as well as a runoff control program so that when we bring that in house, we have some guidance on how to make that happen. We've also included funds for a rate study for the potential of implementation of a public enterprise fund or stormwater utility. I'll explain a little bit more about that here in a minute. And as I mentioned, the future infrastructure costs for the capital improvement, we don't know yet. And so we're working on that, so we have unknown listed there for that amount.
Can you give me some examples of what that would be? Just because I'm learning.
Of the.
So kind of what, what sort of infrastructure improvements would we need? Just a few examples.
Culvert replacements or.
You got examples?
You use them on. You see those Corby and Steel tires they lost? They have a lifespan and so you have to replace them.
Okay.
We've got one of those at our, going up near one of our facilities that's starting to decay. And that, there's that with the amount of stormwater infrastructure we have with the junction box and culvert pipe replacement.
Because I just was thinking, figuring it would be part of like a long weaver highway where we end up with standing water quite a bit. I figured that sort of thing would fall under it, wouldn't it? Okay. Thanks.
I have a question concerning water. Which, who, which body is responsible for checking stormwater runoff for E coli? I know we're leaking E coli into the French Broad through a few creeks, I couldn't name them, and also maybe some sewage leakage or something. Where is that in our budget or is that someone else's responsibility?
It would fall under the IDDE, the illicit discharge detection and elimination. So if we bring that in house, we would have, and we hire a stormwater physician, they would be inspecting those kind of things. We may need to get other agencies involved, but we would at least know they were happening.
Is there a plan for that?
That's part of the plan for the plan.
For this, okay. All right. Thank you.
Adrian, some of the work for stormwater is going to need to happen on private property, correct? I mean, I'll use Rails Mountain as an example. And we have the consultants on site as I speak. Is the town, private property owners, are we going to require them to meet certain standards? Have you gotten that far into the planning of this?
That's where the stormwater ordinance comes in. That's what we're working on now, so we don't have it obviously adopted, but we are working on those requirements.
So it'll cover all of the above?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
So the options for funding, so one, we can absorb the annual recurring costs into the general fund, which is not recommended. We can establish a public enterprise fund, as I just mentioned, to cover the reoccurring program costs and/or utilize ARPA funds to offset the reoccurring year one cost.
Can you explain what a public enterprise fund is? Thank you very much.
So the state realizing this is an unfunded mandate has listed authority for a public enterprise fund to cover several different areas, but stormwater is one of them. So we can, the authority is found in 160A, 311 through 314, and it defines public enterprise fund and what the, what those funds can be used for. So it's a separate fund dedicated to a specific area. There's other options to use for public enterprise funds, but it gives the authority to operate the fund and it, the authority to fix and enforce the rates of the fund. But it does limit the rates and charges of the fund, so the cost can, the charges cannot exceed the cost of providing the service. And so the revenue production cannot be arbitrary. So we need to have a very good idea of what, what the revenue we are trying to collect with the fund is and, and set the fee that way. And so we are recommending that that not happen this fiscal year. And I'll get to that at the end of the slide on what the recommendations are for the fund. But that's an option for future years of the reoccurring yearly cost. So this is a map of all the permit holders in the state, MS4 permit holders in the state, and the black dots represent those permit holders that have a utility or use a public enterprise fund to fund their stormwater programming. enterprise fund to fund their stormwater programming. To zoom in just a little bit, this is, Linda, our region and all the locations that have a stormwater permit. The green represents those that have a utility, stormwater utility slash public enterprise fund. And this map is a little outdated because Laurel Park in Henderson County and Black Mountain just recently implemented stormwater utilities as well. So our recommendations are to add the administrator position and the reoccurring program costs in 2023 and fund that through the ARPA, ARPA funds. Possibly to allocate additional ARPA funds for stormwater capital improvements and to establish a public enterprise fund to pay for ongoing program costs with a target start date of January 2024. Any questions?
One, just on the, the capital needs. I know that we've had that inventory done now. Coupling that with just our on-the-ground knowledge of what that infrastructure looks like, do we expect that there's a large amount of capital work that needs to be done to improve the stormwater infrastructure that we currently own?
I know it's still large. Well, we've got $50,000, $100,000 left for the side of this. We'll probably identify a few more smaller items as we do this paving project when we get in there and dig it up. Then there's the one out at the maintenance facility. I mean, if we had to replace it, you could be in the $500 to $1 million range pretty quick because it's, I don't know, it was a 48 or 60 inch height. That's from 10 to 18 feet deep or 300 feet. So it's, it's fairly substantial. I'm looking at some ways, I'm going to take it, many engineers would, would get a lot of their, try to investigate that, see if there's an alternative we can do. But from the inventory, they only identified three locations that were suspect. And to me, it showed that that was purely an inventory. There was no priority, no, what's the word for it? They, they didn't evaluate the, the?
The conditions.
It wasn't a condition rating survey. So that's what we're looking at doing next step. See what the scope and scale is of the inventory that we currently own. And then we can plan, capital plan.
As a reminder, we previously budgeted over $900,000 for this initial capital investment. That's not covered all.
Right. And that's, that's why I was asking, when I think about whether to adopt a public enterprise fund, I think that determination really has to be based on whether there's a substantial amount of work that needs to be done and will need to be done on an annual basis going forward. And it sounds like there is, based on what we know already from the inventory and what we know from our own properties. So to that extent, it seems to make sense to me to adopt a public enterprise fund in order to fund those ongoing needs. I wouldn't want to do it if we just didn't have the demand for constantly being out and doing these projects, but if the demand's there, that's the best way of dealing with it.
Any other questions? So that stormwater being probably one of our larger capital needs for this next fiscal year, we want to do however, pay attention that there are some other needs the city has or the town has, and we should probably discuss some of that as well. So to begin, looking at some of the town's facilities, we have the Silverline Building. This is the, the commercial building that's in the Silverline Park. So it's a building in the park, but it's not a park building per se. This has been used commercially, and it has kind of fallen into disrepair. The condition's not great. It is located in a flood hazard area, so that also creates some challenges with trying to understand, you know, how best to use this facility moving forward. So we're proposing that as it relates to this building, that we have a budget placeholder. We would recommend somewhere in the range of 212,000. Because it's located within a flood plain, there are some limits on the renovations that you can do to a building that is subject to flooding. So it's how the flood insurance program works is they don't want to, they don't want property owners to invest significant funds into buildings that could be damaged by future floods. So we would be capped at 212,000 based on the appraised value of that building that I think the appraisal was done last year. However, we're not sure how, you know, which direction we're going in quite yet with the building. We have an architectural assessment. We're still kind of trying to understand what that assessment, what information that gives us, how to use that information in our decision-making process. Our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee is also discussing future options for the building. They recently received some feedback from a survey from users or potential stakeholders or customers of the park on how that building could be used or what they envisioned the building to be used for. That needs to be taken in consideration. There are some opportunities for public-private partnerships that could be explored further. There's at least two vendors who've expressed some interest in possibly partnering with the town or participating in some cost sharing with renovations to the building. And then, of course, our comprehensive plan process may identify other community needs, other priorities that we haven't yet taken into consideration. So it's a little premature to set the direction on this building just yet. We, it's unlikely that it's going to be a full renovation that's just cost prohibitive. It's not practical given the flood likelihood of this property. So we're probably looking at either a demolition and reconstruction of some other facility or a renovation of this building that removes the walls, allows the floodwaters to move in and recede as needed, and then allows for some other community use and possibly some, some leased space for private use. So that's one of our facilities. Of course, Town Hall has been the subject of some discussion. As Sherri mentioned earlier, we are at capacity. We've actually exceeded capacity. We don't have enough office and meeting space for the staff that we currently have. We also know that the physical limitations of the building are making it difficult to adapt to modern governance. We've had conversations about adapting this room to accommodate larger groups or better visibility by the public or technology, and there are just, it's these kinds of conversations that are becoming increasingly difficult given the limitations of the building. There's also been some deferred maintenance over time that's kind of, it's questioning, you know, the, the, the practicality of investing a lot of money in a significant renovation of this building. So all of that has led to conversations about, you know, reconstructing or building a new Town Hall. Conversations from last year estimated a new, it was a very ballpark estimate doubling the size of this existing building to accommodate future needs and estimated that at a little over $5 million. That's based on a per square foot construction cost of $320. Given what's happened in, happening in the construction industry over this last year, we know that that number is not accurate any longer. We've recently gotten some, some feedback from our partners at Bunkin County that we should probably be estimating closer in the neighborhood of 500, possibly more per square foot. So that is going to increase the cost of a new building, not insubstantially. This also does not anticipate any land acquisition, this, this previous budget estimate. It does look at however, selling some town property to kind of help offset those costs and looking at some other debt financing and, and general fund revenues. So, so looking forward, we're probably looking at closer, you know, a new building construction cost of closer to $7 million. When you add in the design costs, that includes the feasibility and needs assessment study that we mentioned earlier. That would be the first step that the town would decide to take. If that then moves us into the next phase, that would be construct, or design costs for the actual construction. So you're looking at total project costs of probably closer to $8 million. And then there's an example of how we could potentially fund. But there are some additional things that we can look at that kind of helps offset some of those costs as well. We would probably be looking at installment financing over a 20-year time period. So you can see this is sort of an amortization table of how those, that debt service works. So you can see that there is an annual expenditure that has to be planned for every year for those 20 years, beginning, it starts with the highest dollar amount of 623, and it kind of goes down over time as each year, as you kind of pay down that balance to, you know, $350,000 or so. So it kind of gives you an idea of what to expect with, with that project. As I mentioned, we would begin with a needs assessment and feasibility study. That would be, we would look at, we would bring in a professional who would really look at the work that we do, assess what our needs are, exactly how much space do we need, how much meeting space, how do we accommodate the public, things of that nature. Then we would look at the feasibility study, which would be the location, the optimal location, I think the comprehensive plan. Planning process may also in, help inform that decision and then, of course, budget. So these first two items are typically done together. The, we had previously budgeted $100,000, as Sherri mentioned earlier, because of the increased costs, construction costs that we're anticipating, I, I would recommend that we adjust that to 140,000 if the, if the board supports this. And then, of course, we move, the second decision or second phase would be the design and development of the building plans and the site plans, and we would normally budget about 10% of the total project cost for that. Another facility need is the salt storage bin. So you could put this under facility improvements, you could put it under stormwater. So this is one of those municipal facilities that must be addressed in order to comply with the stormwater management plan on our MS4 permit. The building houses all of the salts that we use for, for the streets when we have storm events. We estimated a replacement of this building. I should say, there's two issues with this building. One is it's not large enough, I should say, three issues. One is it's not large enough. We barely can house enough salt to get through a typical year. So if we had an even slightly atypical year or a series of events, we would likely run out and not be able to meet the community's needs. We would be calling around, trying to get salt from other places. So that's one problem is the capacity probably isn't large enough. The building has definitely reached the end of its life. You can see even probably from this photo, it's, it's in disrepair. It's leaking in the roof. There's water infiltration along the edges. So we have leaching. So that's the third problem is we do have a pollution problem here. The salt is leaching out of the building. So this is, this is probably a pretty high priority. We had previously estimated about $60,000 to replace this. Again, because of the increase in materials and construction costs, we're looking at probably more like $180,000 for this. Parks and Greenways, we had previously allocated 150,000 budgeted in the stormwater infrastructure item for, for the park. And we had also previously budgeted about $200,000, or not about $200,000 for Wi-Fi service in the park. I think Sherri mentioned earlier, that was one of the approved expenditures under the previous rules for ARPA, so that doesn't apply any longer. We don't have to be restricted in that way. So I would say if this is not a high priority or not at this time, that that money could probably be better spent elsewhere. But just coincidentally, the renovation of the Silverline Building is, you know, we're recommending to, you know, hold back a little over 200,000 for that. So that, that could be sort of an even swap. I think there will be a time to revisit the Wi-Fi conversation, particularly with the Riverside Expansion Project where, you know, larger events might take place, but at this time, I'm not sure that it's the highest priority. The sanitation regarding the garbage and the recycling carts. So we had previously budgeted 175,000 for a phased rollout. So I think the original idea was that we might do a part of the city or a part of the town at a time. And so there, there are some challenges with that plan. I think it might be a better recommendation to maybe look at if there wasn't enough money for both garbage and recycling to maybe consider one or the other in year one, and then maybe look at the other in the following year. If we had to prioritize one, we might want to consider the recycling only because there's a grant option available that could help offset those costs right now. So that's something we could apply for and potentially get some funding. It's not a huge amount of funding. We estimate 30 to 60,000, but it's, it's something that could help. So that is another consideration.
Question, please? These, say the 3100 trash customers, is that the total universe or have you subtracted out neighborhoods that already have barrels, neighborhoods that physically can't use them, or is that the universe of customers?
I think that's the universe of customers. So everybody would be eligible for one of these.
Would we want to replace them if neighborhoods, you drive around on trash day and they're, they're, they're everywhere? I'm, I'm sure there are a lot of residents that don't have them, but is there a way that we could subtract out and reduce the cost? In my neighborhood, everybody's got one of each. We wouldn't need a new one?
We could certainly look at that. I, Johnny wasn't able to be here today because he's under the weather, but that's something we can?
Okay.
Explore and maybe come back with some more information at the next session.
Okay.
The streets paving project, this is just a kind of a placeholder slide to kind of remind, remind us all where, you know, the work that has already been completed and what's coming. We do expect next month, we, we did have the second round of bids this morning and had a very, very positive response and got a bid that came in at budget. So that was very big relief, I think, for all of us. So that's something that we'll bring to the board in their upcoming meeting in April. And of course, this is being financed outside of ARPA, so this is going to be through installment financing. Oops, excuse me. Let me go back. So some of the identified decision points, when we look at stormwater, when we look at some of the other facility needs, these were the items that I thought would be best to summarize at the end of this presentation. So first is the question about the stormwater management plan and the recurring costs. So we'd like to hire that administrator. We've got some program costs associated with that. It takes time, even if the board were to, to support a utility, it's going to take us some time to get that in place. So for year one, we would recommend funding that out of the, you know, what is that reallocated ARPA money? So it's, it's additional money in the general fund. We also have the one-time expense for the stormwater infrastructure improvements. We don't know the exact dollar amount at this time, but we'll have to conduct that inventory or the assessment of the inventory in order to be able to come back to you with some more specific numbers, but I think we're easily looking at a million plus. Town Hall is, does the board support moving forward with the needs assessment and feasibility study? The park facilities, again, do we want to swap the money that had been previously allocated for the Wi-Fi for the phase one of the Silverline Building renovation? I should say the building renovation cannot be completed with the money that we would recommend allocating for phase one. It's going to be a multi-year investment, probably phased. We may start with opening the building up in, in year one as an example, do restroom renovations in year two, et cetera. The way the flood plain program works, you can invest up to 50% each year. So we can do it rolling. So we just can't do too much in one calendar year, but then we can continue the renovation as a phased project. There is the sanitation facility, the salt bin, as I just mentioned. I think that's going to need to be a high priority. And then the sanitation services is, you know, do we want to move forward with this program? And if so, to what extent and how do we phase it? And there may be some other capital expenses or other things to that, the board's discretion. And there may be some other capital expenses or other things too that the board's discretion. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or we can just open it up for general discussion.
If we have suggestions or proposals, is now the time to bring those up? Or is that a separate moment?
No, I think now's the time. This is, this is our, here we go.
Okay.
Discussion slide. So now's the time to have that conversation.
I'll jump out there.
I'm going to move so that I can.
Okay. Some of you may be aware that Commissioner Judy Butler and I are on the steering committee, partnering with Woodfin Elementary School. They lack a playground. And I was a kid, I cannot imagine, and from the volunteer work I've done at the school, not having some swing sets and it's just, I think it's ridiculous. Several years ago, the Buncombe County Board of Education made all recreation activities owned by the parent and teacher organization. The county will provide no funding for a playground. We set up the steering committee to start investigating options about a year ago. We have monthly meetings with the principal of the school. Commissioner Butler met with the associate superintendent of Buncombe County Schools to talk about the future of the school. The last thing we wanted to do was to start raising private money and have the county say, hey, we're going to move the school, close it. We got some pretty solid assurances and their logic is, is very sound, how Woodfin's going to, Woodfin's going to have a school. It's the only public school in Woodfin, so we feel fairly confident about that. We've secured a matching donor, I've met with that family, and their match is unlimited. The budget for this playground, based on the architectural renderings, and keep it in mind that the key cost is based on the Americans with Disability Act. The property this school lies on is a slope and the only thing the county will approve is a, is a long path. But the architect has come up with some great ideas to use the path, put some slides in the path so that a kid, if their kid was in a wheelchair, needed to go down the whole path. If a kid didn't, they could go down 50 feet and literally slide under the, under the path. So the total anticipated cost for this is about $175,000. We have half of that, we have a matching grant that I'm just thrilled about. We've started to get commitments from people in the public. We're targeting stakeholders like the construction companies and developers that are literally getting rich building in, in Woodfin. The companies like Ferguson's, which are getting even richer, supplying plumbing facilities. I hope that, I'd like for the town, in the old plan, there was $10,000 earmarked for a victory garden at the school. In meeting with the principal, she wasn't aware of that and I don't know that I know what a victory garden is. But I would propose that we allocate some money from the coronavirus funds to that playground. I think it'd be a wonderful thing if the town and its elected government took the lead and committed some money. I think it would set a great example and I think it would really help us as we go out and solicit donations from the private, from the private sector and residents in Woodfin and elsewhere, that the town is behind this, they support the school with a, with a solid commitment. And at the day of the 5K, one other thing, we're working with the nonprofit setup from the 5K, which raises money for supplies and activities for the school. We've gotten approval from the accountants that anybody that wants to donate money to the playground can make the donation through that 501(c)(3), which makes it totally tax deductible. They will sequester those funds within their account and then turn them over to the school. And the playground construction fund is necessary. So I, I think it's incredibly important that we support the school. I know in the past, so many residents do support the school, the town has done a number of things. The support for the, for the 5K alone is, is an awesome thing that public works and the police department do. So I don't know the exact amount. I know that since we had 10,000, you know, place held for a victory, for a garden at the school, some landscaping. I wish we could pick a number, since these are found funds. If I was going to pick, I'd, I'd say I wish the town could take $25,000 of that money. It'll be matched, it becomes 50,000 immediately to kick off this playground fund. And the important date is on the morning of the 5K. At the school, we're going to have in big storyboards, we'll have the artist renderings of the new playground and sketches of it. And we're asking people who are making pledges now to bring their checks on that morning. And we're going to provide coffee and the principal will make a presentation. So we're going to try to make a little event out of it. And we think that the news, local newspapers have agreed to cover that and publicize it. We really think that we've got a good, a good solid plan to raise the money for this playground. So I hope that my fellow commissioners would consider supporting that through some of these ARPA funds. I'd be happy to answer questions, but that's my wish. Yes, Commissioner?
Where would this playground go?
It's going to go on, if you face the school over to the right.
Okay.
There's a kind of an old jungle gym out front. In the back, there used to be a soccer goal, somebody stole it, my understanding is. But it slopes downward, that land goes behind the school and slopes down. And that's part of the problem with the construction costs and ADA access. But the plan involves basketball goals, swing sets, jungle gyms. And these days, you know, the government's really involved in the, this equipment. It can only come from a specific list of vendors that have already been approved by the state and the county. We had envisioned it first, like my builder said, I'll, I'll help with the landscape. And I've got crews and the county nicks that immediately, absolutely not. Must use approved vendors. So it seems like a closed system, we're not happy about it, but we can't fight that. So, but the playground, if you do face the school, they've got rolling land that goes back there. It's absolutely beautiful. And I think if we, this budget only calls for the minimum. But if we happen to raise more, there are some plans to do some landscaping and making it fun. Does that answer your question?
It does. And could you refresh my memory about why the kids can't use the playground in the park?
Couple of, couple of reasons. One, you have to cross the street to get to it. Traffic over there has become a safety issue. They can and they sometimes do, but again, it is not ADA compliant. I was surprised to find that out. So it's an issue there. We even had some crazy brainstorming discussions. What if we cut a deal with the town to reroute the street? And it just, those were all, you know, they were great conversations to have over a cup of coffee in the park. But they're not realistic and the steering committee really felt strongly that the, the best path forward to get a playground for these kids is, is to proceed this way and stop chasing fantasies, so to speak.
Okay. Do, do you happen to know if there's a computer lab at the school?
There are, oh.
Yeah? Oh, good.
They have the, the library at the school, the Residents' Rails Mountain Homeowners Association funded a few years ago and they converted the library to a media center. And it really is, the library now, it's set up like your elementary school library, but all of that is on wheels and they can push it back. They allow the public to have meetings there. It's got some state-of-the-art equipment. So in that respect, the school is, is top-notch. But, you know, I volunteered over there the first winter, it was really cold. And a dumb story, there was one child that needed to understand how to wash his hands. And it was cold that day and there's no, the only warm or hot water in the school is in the cafeteria. And it is allowed in the bathrooms, but that would be a huge expensive proposition. So those of you who have had kids, you know how much they like to lather up those hands in, in ice cold water in the wintertime. But I did succeed in getting this kid, it was, it was gross, it was terrible. But, and those of you, if you've had, you've had kids, you know, there was a third and a fourth grade boy that I was tutoring in math and, you know, they were so hyperactive that the only way I could get them to really was provide, provide a reward. But we couldn't go on the playground for 15 minutes, we just had to go out and walk around the building in circles. So I, I think having a playground is critically important. And there's all kinds of studies and data about it. But I think common sense alone tells most people that a school without, and that one, there, there are potholes, there, there's danger, the teachers can't just let the kids run because some of them have been hurt. There's rocks and all kind of craziness over there. I think it's a shame that our county doesn't support it, but maybe you'll run for county commission next time, Hazel, and fix that. So anyway, end of speech, I'm excited about it. The prospect of doing it, to me, is just, is just really cool. And I hope that we'll, I hope we'll consider doing something like that. And I hope we'll consider making that decision so that it could be announced on the day of the 5K, April 30.
What was the intent of the victory garden? What, I don't have that history, what was that? The 10,000 that was put in there initially, does anybody know?
So that was a request by Commissioner O'Malley, the word that she had met with folks. And I'm not sure certain who or for exactly how I like to do that. That was a specific request of one district. And it was, it was to support the school. There was a plan whenever, if you're full position after that, there's time.
And that, that money wasn't ever spent, was it? So that's 10,000 basically toward gyms.
And I'm not against the garden, don't get me wrong. I think some flowers and landscaping would be great, but.
Right, the playground to me, Jim, I feel like you do. Kids not into flowers as much as they are, like we are, as much as they are into playground equipment. I certainly wouldn't oppose if our budget or whatever could stand it. I guess we're talking about $15,000, Jim, along with the 10.
Yes, sir, that's what, that would be my wish.
You're, you're suggesting 25,000?
Yes, Commissioner.
We've already budgeted 10. I would, I mean, what do you think, Larry?
We've got it, I don't know.
The town's been good to the school over the years. Not long ago, the town bought them iPads and computer equipment. And I can't, no, go ahead.
Would it be helpful to go through some of the specific needs that we talked about? And then kind of see what's maybe left?
I think so, don't you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Bring it back to us at our next budget meeting, maybe.
Well, we could do it at our regular meeting, since you, since you want something by the end of the month.
That would be ideal, by the end of the month. And the town would get some great publicity from it and.
Well, just put it on, have it as an agenda item and get the facts to go with it.
Do those require, and I can bring, I can have everybody a copy of the artist renderings and the sketches. Does it require a motion and a vote?
Yes.
For these lineups?
We have to appropriate funds through the vote.
Budget resolution.
Before we can make that commitment. But just, it's, it's the general consensus of the board will work out those details and bring that before we really make them. But it doesn't become official until the budget's adopted.
Right, I understand.
Making a public commitment, you know, maybe there's.
Could we?
Anybody opposed to putting 25 grand on the next agenda?
No.
No.
Okay.
Jim, remember that as a motion, I'll say.
Thank you, appreciate that. And Commissioner Butler and I will get you whatever you need to put in the packet for.
I'd like to talk to you in more detail about the funding mechanism. I think the school has their own 501(c)(3) of the county school's foundation. You can earmark funding for them.
They charge a, they charge a non-negotiable 2.5% fee. And we can get it at no fee through the other nonprofit. We, we, we thought that was a good avenue.
Who's in charge of the nonprofit and who can't check? We just need to pass some assurances that's a secure.
I can provide all of that, they have a corporation with officers and you'll know some of those people that are those officers.
I've spearheaded fundraising efforts for the school and various projects in the past. And we've gone through the foundation, I don't recall ever having paid a fee.
Well, Judy.
Let's talk about, let's.
Okay. I'll, you tell me what, what the commission's going to need to make the right decision and Judy and I can get you whatever you need, whatever you need to do on that. I get it, I understand. I'm on the board of a nonprofit and I, there's some, you've got to dot a lot of i's to do it right. But if you've got specific suggestions, we're all ears. But Commissioner Butler did meet with them and it's, their, their process is also a little cumbersome. This way, we can get a check for whenever the steering committee needs it. So, okay, let's talk offline and I'll get, you can tell me what we need to do. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Just a note on that though, so for that, we're probably going to need a written agreement with something that we can, something that we can pre-audit so that we can release those funds. And then just, if that is the way we go with a written agreement, there's a specific statute that lets us do this and it's 168-353, section four. And that specifically allows us to give money for, for playgrounds, so.
All right, thank you.
That'd be the one to cite.
Greg from the SCOB board, he would have to be in agreeance with it. Over at the maintenance department. I'm sure they would be, but.
What is that again?
The maintenance department at the SCOB board, they would have to agree with it.
They, they, okay.
Greg White, do you know him?
Don't.
He's the director there.
The superintendent's office has signed off on the PTO fundraising. They've signed off on the initial architectural drawings for the playground. But I'll find out and make sure.
I'm sure he's been in contact.
But you also have to look at the maintenance of it ongoing. And from way too many years working for the government, there are an awful lot of hoops to jump through.
Our understanding is that, that's a, that the county, the Board of Education wants nothing to do with playground stadiums, et cetera, moving forward. But thank you, I'll specifically look into that.
It's all responsible.
Yeah, he can make it work, you just have to do it the right way.
Okay, good, thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you for your time on that, I appreciate it. Thank you for that site.
So in terms of getting some feedback on some of the other victory items that we shared with you, maybe we could also come up to you to some of these decision points that we are looking to get some direction from the board on. You don't have to take them in order, but.
I'm thinking that, from what you guys are explaining, that one, two, and five are pretty much absolute musts. Is that?
Yeah, so some of that information that you mentioned earlier today, kind of, I think, affirms the, the priority or the level of priority that we should apply with the stormwater management plan and getting that personnel in-house and starting some of that important work. The, the infrastructure repair work is that type of expense. We don't, we have to do that, take the inventory and get the, the condition of the inventory assessed. So that's one of those startup costs that Adrian referred to earlier. Once we have that information, we'll be able to better estimate what the total capital expense is. But I think we do want to go ahead and budget some money for this first year. We won't get all of the big dollars anyways, no, it's just something to get, get started. So yeah, I would agree, those are pretty important. And given the level of municipal responsibility for our own facilities, I think the salt bin is one of the ones.
I'm surprised that salt bin has lasted as long as it did. Because that was a, when, when we bought that property down there, that was a storage building for something. It was worn out then and we decided, well, we had to have somewhere to put salt, so.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, it's fair to say it succeeded in its usage. So that, that is important.
Are we, are we planning on replacing it with a larger one, given the capacity issue? Okay, and is there a physical space for a larger one? Okay.
We might, we probably located it to make it a little bit more accessible for the trucks anyway.
A few years passed, it went running into difficulties of even getting salt and had to purchase it back, like in May or June, when you don't think about salt, just to have it for the winter. And, and it, it's been a supply issue for several years now. I've been a lot personally, we need to get all we can get, we want to get it.
Is that something that could be done on a short order or any, who knows?
The building or salt?
All of the above.
Salt, no.
Wow.
He's right, because I did that same thing for the mill. You don't order salt in November, December, January, or when else. Because DOT takes, they've got orders in place and they, they have residents, so it's really hard to get it.
And expensive.
Shannon made a good point, if we have back-to-back storm incidents, which sometimes that happens in January, and we had a couple that were in the park. And if you run out of salt, you're not going to get more salt in January, which you borrow it from the county or the R T D if they happen to have excess, which leaves our residents, you know, when we might be able to provide services if we want to do it.
If they have a typical winter in the Northeast like they've been having, there ain't no salt, for us.
Let's order up.
We were in September, but at least we did this year, so we anticipate maybe this February.
So my question is, Shannon, if, is that something that needs to go on the agenda as well? And can a building like, is it a temporary building? It's hard to tell, or is it one that's going to have to be constructed at?
It was a temporary build.
Turned into a permanent.
Turned into a permanent. Turned into a permanent building.
But with construction timelines right now, is it even, can we even get it done this year?
Uh, I, I don't know about getting it done this year, but, you know, this, uh, we would need to, what we would recommend is that you just give us the direction to include it in the, in the commander's budget. And we would do that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we need to take action for the adoption of the project. Uh, the other stormwater-related decision that needs to be made is whether or not the board, at least at this time, is supporting the idea of establishing an enterprise fund. So just to be super clear, that means doing a study and the estimated ten thousand dollars for a rate study, which would give us the information of how much money do we need to collect in order to fund the program and those capital expenses? And, um, and then what should the fee be? You know, and, and there's different ways you can structure that fee. Some are more complicated, but more equitable, or some are a little more straightforward. We're looking and in contact with the county about getting with the, on the tax bill. That seems to be the most practical way, since we don't administer our own utility. That seems to be the, the solution that works the best for smaller towns. Um, so, but that is gonna take some time to get in place. So that tier one, we would have to probably have it as a really discovered, um, for the allocation department. But moving forward, it could be one of the enterprise fund plans. The state specifically authorizes us to do it. Most feminist war permit holders do it this way, and that's how we fund the program. It is an unfunded mandate from the state, so the town and the cities have to come up with a way to do it somehow. Um, it's, we wouldn't anticipate it being a very high fee. Other suburbs and residents, it's, it's a relatively low fee. That would be probably the, our recommended way. You don't have to, as the slides that Adrian shared showed, not all municipalities could even enterprise fund, but most do. Because their budget structure just can't handle the cost of the government laws. So that would be another decision that, um, that would be made. And then moving on to the, the, we can talk about the park facilities, the Wi-Fi versus the renovation, and then the park management. Does anybody have any thoughts about enterprise fund?
Sounds like the way to go.
I've already, yeah, but I've already supported it. I, I think just good information to the board to know is that the mechanisms that Shannon's talking about in terms of structuring it, you can get, you can get creative to make it really quite equitable for private homeowners, so you don't really put the burden on them. You typically base it off of the level of impervious surface that someone has on their property to begin with. So private, single-family homes aren't the, the worst. They don't have a giant parking lot out front. And then you can even structure the fee to be higher for commercial properties and lower for residential ones. So it ends up not being an enormous burden on, on, uh, just individual house owners, so. I think that's just something to keep in mind in deciding whether to support it, in addition to the, the need aspect that we clearly have.
If, if you're looking for a direction, it sounds like everybody seems to be in agreement on one, two, and five to move forward.
Um, well, then if we can move on and talk about town hall, and just wanna make sure to see if the board supports moving forward, but that needs assessment feasibility study, um, that would be the first step in the process.
I'd like, I would like to learn more about how that feasibility study would work and perhaps see a sample that a vendor has done in another town before I would be ready to go there.
And additionally, the information on whatever piece of property we were planning to sell, uh, as that last pro forma, I don't even know what, what that was, so having that information too.
What is the community center? Um, so there's, there's, you know, lots of things that could be considered. You know, we could move some of our community facilities to that Silverline Riverside Park building. You know, that could become a new community center. It'd be a, a three C's of community center. And, or, and then build on the community center property as one example. Then sell this property, the other option is to sell the community center property and still move those as well. You know, so these are...
But it would also be a, a hypothetical look. What if we wanted to relocate down near Riverside? And it would do the real analysis of, is there anything adjacent to Reynolds Village or is that a pipe dream? They would confirm some of the myths and stories we've heard.
Those are all of the things that this, we would want this feasibility study to look at.
Gotcha.
What is the real, you know, what are the realistic options or what are the costs associated with the different options? I don't know that we've explored the Reynolds Mountain option well enough to know yet.
I just wanna see it as a column on a spreadsheet. And I do think, and I know, uh, Hazel and Eric and I committed that we do at some point in the spring, we've promised the public that we will hold some listening sessions. I think it's important that we let the residents of Woodfinn weigh in in whatever form and fashion they want to. There's a real desire to be listened to, and this is one of the subject areas that people wanna be listened to. So it sounds like those things could be merged perfectly, so that we get public support. Whatever we decide to do, that the public, you know, we heard, we had a, we had a role in this, this is fantastic, let's do it. So that if they have to pay, which they probably will, they, we hopefully can get them behind that as well.
And there's been some preliminary feedback for the comprehensive planning process too. That is, that is kind of suggesting that, that the community is supporting the creation of a new center.
Great. Awesome.
Um, so then moving on, we'll bring you back some more information at the next meeting, um, regarding the need to assessment feasibility studies. So I guess the next question would be the park facilities, the Silverline building renovation. If we should allocate some money for a phase one renovation of that building. It could be as simple as replacing the Wi-Fi money that had been previously allocated with that. Holding up on the Wi-Fi over another year until the time where the need is properly created. I, I'm not really sure, I, I don't, I think adding Wi-Fi to our park facilities is, is a logical goal. I, I don't know of any, very many municipalities, particularly in our area, that are doing this right now, so that's kind of, that's kind of cutting edge. Um, so I wouldn't, staff probably wouldn't prioritize that highly, but, um, if this was gonna let up to you all.
That may be something we wanna do, you know, the county is doing this deep dive on internet access. I don't know if you've responded to the survey. While you're responding to the survey, they literally check your device and your internet service provider. Uh, we might wanna try to tag team with that, but I, I wonder if maybe we don't need to take a closer look at the... You know, we got whole neighborhoods in Woodfinn that have no internet access. And when COVID hit, the school literally lost contact with almost forty percent of their students for months because there was no one to drive them to McDonald's to use their phone to do their homework. So before we wire parks, I'd, I'd at least like for us to talk through, do we need to wire some neighborhoods instead? And so that we can say with this ARPA money, you know, we, 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 these things we did were not, they weren't packaging. They were really things that benefited the citizens and, uh, in this beach.
But are we, in looking for next year, in a position to address those kind of things? Or with the suggestion being made to look at the Silverline building, which is a, an eyesore and also a problem right in the middle of a park we're getting ready to open. I almost think that the suggestion of moving the money from Wi-Fi now, because we're still so nebulous in what we think ought to happen to it, that it would be more appropriate perhaps to use it. I think as, I don't remember if it was Adrian or Shannon, Shannon said as phase one for that building.
A couple of things to note about the building too is, as is the case with deferred maintenance, you know, the longer we wait, the more costly the repair and inspection can end up being. So that's one concern. Also, the building is vacant now. It is secure, reasonably secure, but we have had some trouble with the unhoused getting in the building, um, some vandalism. So the longer that sits empty and unintended, the greater risks. So, um, I think we need to make some decision relatively quickly.
We do, I, I don't, I don't see how we can really, uh, allocate funds if we don't know what the end result is that we want for that building.
Yeah, that's, that, that's the same concern that I had, because, I mean, we haven't even heard from that advisory committee on, on what guidance they're gonna give us or what recommendations they're gonna give us based on the survey that they did. The, the range in terms of things that are discussed between partnering with a private business that's gonna outfit the whole thing and make it flood, and make it out of the floodplain, to we'll just take the walls down and have it as a pole barn, are so wildly disparate that I'm fine putting it as a line item for that, that building now, but I still don't have any level of confidence that we've got a plan moving forward. So I think, I, I completely agree with removing it from the Wi-Fi. And if we nominally need to allocate it towards something, I think that building is a fine place to do it. But I'd really like to get more feedback from what, what the staff recommendation is on, on that building so that we can really make a decision. And we know what the cap is in terms of, of what amount of money we're working with. And so I think it's, I think all the variables are known, we just need a, a menu of options that we can pick from.
That is, that is exactly correct, and that is what we are proposing, is that we don't have a plan yet, you're right. Uh, but we are trying to figure out, getting more information, more recommendations, and exploring those options further. And then exploring those options to the board. We're fairly confident, however, an option can be selected this next year. And having some money set aside, we know that we can't go over the two hundred and twelve thousand, we know that that's a cap. Um, I'm not sure we could get much of a renovation started with less than two hundred thousand, um, regardless. I, I mean, I, I can't, I can't read a crystal ball, but I think it's highly unlikely, given the flood hazard conditions, that we're looking at full-scale renovation and we'll creep that up into money. And that is, that is very costly, and I don't see the town going in that direction. That combined with the, the, the needs that I think we have identified, the potential more community space, I think a potential partnership would be, a public-private partnership would be limited. I don't think those vendors are gonna come in and do a pool we have. They're, they're gonna let us do the show, or then they're gonna come in and outfit their rental lease. So it's, it's still an investment in a, uh, an improvement to that property that we would not necessarily pay for for this month.
Would, if we had vendors, would they be allowed to sell beer on park property? Is there, what does the law say about that?
The, the town has ordered to prohibit its alcohol on town property.
Okay. So Wicked Weed isn't gonna wanna partner with us if they can't sell beer, for example?
Yeah, I, yeah, we kind of know, we're, we're, we're gonna make those exceptions. There, I don't know that that's been, I mean, we've had a, like, food truck restaurateur, an outdoor outfitter. I mean, I think what, if we went in that direction, we would want it to be a community partner that, that their service or their business kind of meshes with the public recreation opportunities that we have already. So we wouldn't open it up to just anything that would have something that is consistent with our vision.
One of the guiding thoughts tonight is still to provide bathrooms. No other, there's no section in Long Island that, you know, if the greenway was completed, other than what we're planning to do at Riverside, there's really no bathrooms. So that was to be removed as a thing we're trying to solve. That makes this, what, what we're gonna do with this building a little easier, maybe? But I, I say that because I, I guess, I'm just asking that again to make sure that providing bathrooms is what we wanna do. I, I'm assuming that, but I wanted to ask.
We have, we have bathrooms to do with that existing building. So bathrooms in, in a floodfront area are almost tricky. We have an existing building with bathrooms in it, so there's, there's, it's not a loophole. It's actually an allowance under the flood regulations that allows us to renovate the existing bathrooms. If we were to construct new, we would have to build those bathrooms.
That's true.
So there is a little opportunity there, um, which makes keeping the building at least in some form maybe more attractive. But again, you do definitely need to explore that.
It sounded like everyone, nobody was jumping up and down about the Wi-Fi, though, so.
No, and I think we, we need funds for that building because something has to be done to it one way or another and to have something available as a start, a starting point.
Are we still considering, uh, the portable bathrooms that, that are on the, in the trailers? Are we still?
That's, that's another option that we looked at in the mix of all of the different options.
Yeah, 'cause in, in my mind, if, if we demolish that building, um, that's what we'll have to do, is have trailer bathrooms, which I'm fine with. I just wanted to be clear that I...
And even if the decision is to demolish that building, I think you're gonna need every go to that ten hundred thousand to demolish it, so it's...
Boy.
So then that would leave the garbage and recycling carts as a counter. This, this particular item, I don't have a lot of history on. I know it's something that the previous commission had discussed and considered. I think from my perspective, only serving part of the town is tricky and creates some challenges rather than serving the whole town at the time. So trying to do a phased rollout might be a little tricky. It's, it's not impossible, but...
I think we need a little bit more data, if that's possible.
Eric did a survey, um, during the course of this, this particular decision, and, um, he posted it for, I don't know, let's say three weeks.
I, we can share, send y'all that survey that was done, did y'all find out that, the new division, did y'all find out that?
We have fifty-one respondents, and all but five or six, um, for this is, be desirable or highly desirable to have the parks. The, the responses were, generally when we do survey, we get several hundred, which is, it was only fifty-one, so I'll admit that was an item of great concern to the residents, but, um, we can't share those survey results from you.
I, I had to ask myself a question recently, and I talked to some of the chief's officers. The, the number of residences in Woodfinn that do not have house numbers, I don't know how the police serve them, they do. But one officer, they said, you know, sometimes we have to knock on three doors to find the right one. And going door to door last year, I was shocked that there are whole streets where there's no sign, there's no house numbers. You know, is it more important to have a garbage bin or your number on your house for the ambulance? I, 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 I hope we, maybe look into some other options as well. And I think, was it Hazel or Betsy, in a previous life, had experience with house number, was that you?
Yes, that was me.
I have too.
Oh.
I didn't, but I'm like, there's a way, there's a way to do that, right?
I had a summer job in Morganton.
Oh.
There were, uh, four, four college students, and we went through the entire town with markers and, and renumbered the entire town.
And if we had curbs, we could number the curbs, but since we don't have curbs, we...
Where'd you number them? You can't go and put a number on somebody's house.
No, we did not. We found out who had numbers, who did not, where there were issues. And so the town then took it further from what we found out and made sure that every town, I know my particular house was renumbered at that point. But we went house to house through the entire town.
So there's a difference between adding numbers, because I guarantee all of these houses have addresses that adjust for missing the numbers.
Agree, yes.
Versus renumbering or readdressing, that is a really tricky, if ever.
One of the things I learned in the process was, owners of short-term rentals, they take the numbers off. And because they don't wanna be able to be tracked by the property number in an obvious way, so they take them off and they just, it has the two yellow rocking chairs on the red front porch. And I thought, well, that, that's, found that out on Vine Street. Two of these different people said, well, we're not gonna have a house number on it. That the town would know, we're rental, we're short-term rental. If they wanna regulate them, we're gonna make it as hard as possible for them to find us. And I thought, you gotta be kidding me.
I've never heard of this.
Hazel, what did you have? You said you had...
Oh, uh, in, in, uh, an old neighborhood I used to live in, we, we had curbs on the streets and, which we don't have here, but you could still do what we did. We took, we had stencils and we, we used to spray paint and made sure that every house had... and made sure that every house had a painted number, because we were doing it with reflective paint, to make it easier for emergency vehicles to find you at night. You know, some, some people have beautiful addresses and, but you can't see them at night.
Chief, is this a big, in your opinion, is it as big a deal as some of us think, or not?
So we are fortunate that we are aided by our computer assistant dispatch, uh, which kind of plots out house numbers for us. So if I were to pull up on that, it's gonna have a little yellow square with a number above it on top of your house. So if your address is not shown there, we're, we're probably gonna be able to find it. And Mr. Mayor, you may remember, maybe when you first came on the board, did we pass something about having to have house numbers?
We didn't hear, but the county asked one, when it put nine-one-one, when they installed it. Only problem was they never enforced it.
Yeah, and the same, unfortunately, I think the same could be true, true for the town. I, you know, the town could also adopt an ordinance saying you must have a number, and it must be this tall, and it must be clearly visible, but then you're creating an enforcement challenge.
Don't pick up their, don't pick up their trash.
If you're not prepared to, to enforce it, then.
I hear you.
The information campaign, you put it out on our website, social media, let people know, hey, this is a requirement, try to get a number on your house, and all of the problems would.
Anyway, just.
Well, and I would also like to add to, to, my story is that, that this was well before GPS. So.
When I was little boy, everybody had their.
The fire department had the same software that the police.
Or on the car, or just on the street.
Ambulance service had the same.
Didn't have curbs.
Yeah.
The city of Asheville used to have them concrete four-sided monuments, remember, mayor with this, a street, uh, names stenciled on our four sides? And, um, I was trying to think of the old gentleman, I was a little, little fella, but that was his job, that's what he did, was painted all those and stenciled the addresses on the sidewalk or the, the curb in four each half. I thought there was some clue he'd come by every two or three years, you know?
Touch it up.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, maybe come back with more information about, um, garbage, garbage.
Also, just like, if we could benchmark ourselves against other similarly sized municipalities in terms of who's doing this, that'd be helpful to know.
Gee, you got my email, that fire code I did. Do we, is that some of the town's address?
I didn't get it.
Oh, you didn't get it, okay. I don't have it with me, but I'll, it's some, I think the town's gonna have to address. Bob, he ain't sending it to me.
Well, Bob enforcing whatever it is.
See if I can save that again.
Um, Brian was just sharing that he thinks that when it was previously discussed, that it was verified that we were the only town in the area that would supply the low-out cans.
Supply the what?
That we were the only time it didn't supply the low-out cans.
Oh.
So, but we'll verify that. So we'll, we'll look into that and try to verify that for you and let you know. I think as Commissioner Lunsford mentioned earlier, the concern about not having a vision wall can sometimes, or we simply either somebody else supplies, it does create a safety concern for our customers. I think there are also fees associated with sound, going China and counting, you could have been for the low-out can, but there's fees that you pay for that.
You rent, yeah, you rent it, I had to do that.
So of course it, Woodfinn doesn't target these recent decisions.
But we could.
We could, then that does introduce, um, it's not a utility, but it is a recurring one through the years. You have to figure out how to, like, it's, you know, doing, feeling that kind of.
I'm in the county and I pay waste per every month.
So I'm paying the city for water and sewer, but I'm in Woodfinn, who picks up my trash? Does the city reimburse or? I need to look at my bill again, okay.
Well, great, I think this gives us, and Sheri, if you have anything else you guys wanna talk about? Any other budget concerned questions or?
Yeah, I, I, I mentioned this before, so just to say it again, in the course of doing the stormwater as, aspects, we should consider adopting an ordinance along the lines of, if not identical to what the city has in terms of defining what we maintain versus what is on private property and we don't maintain, just cause that was really the cornerstone for why they survived a legal challenge on whether we've gotta work on private property or not. So copying what we know to have been approved by the courts would be a great idea.
You know, while you're talking about that, did you read John Boyle's column about a tree falling on, my tree falling on your property? What's involved in getting it cut up? He did a masterful job with that, but it showed how much bureaucracy is involved in getting that tree out of somebody's driveway.
I live it.
I like that in Monday's, Monday's, I think it's Monday's article or Sunday one.
I'd like to compliment the staff, because the preparation for this, from the size of the materials, excellence, this is as good as anything any corporation does, thank you.
Okay, anybody else got anything?
I wanna, uh, welcome Shannon to our married band. Welcome, yeah.
It's gonna be a very good start, so I appreciate it.
She's doing great.
Okay, I will entertain a.
We have one last slide. So our, uh, we're halfway through our budget calendar for this year. The next, as I mentioned early in the meeting, the next budget work session is May third. We have a regular meeting between, on the nineteenth, between now and then. And then we'll come back together on the third, we'll talk about expansion budget. We'll include the new stormwater position and any other item that is a, an increase over our operating, our base budget that we have today, and discuss fee schedule, possibly we'll have some information at that time regarding stormwater fees or, um, an update on, uh, any of the other fee changes that might change. And then, um, tentatively, we had some park operations slash business plans to discuss. We'll, uh, update the board if there are any, any news forthcoming from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee on that. And, uh, one topic of discussion has been Silverline Park's grand opening is a little later this month, right after our next board meeting, and, uh, once the park is operational, we'll have some additional maintenance and things that, uh, we don't currently have a responsibility for today, and how we're gonna fold that into our current operations will be discussed, I'm assuming in May.
Might even feed your hot dog.
Yeah.
Now I'm scared.
Here's lined up some fire trucks, and we're gonna have, um, a nice program in ribbon cutting that way, that day, it's, it sounds pretty exciting, so, on the twenty-first. So that's, that's where we are. We, uh, Shannon will present the, uh, recommended budget at your regular meeting in May, on May seventeenth. So we'll have everything in a somewhat final format for the board to consider then. And, um, then we'll have our, uh, public hearing after that, and, and the budget adoption, uh, discussion and vote will be June twenty-first. Okay? Thank you so much for your time today, take some food with you, and, um.
Take a cookie home for your daughter. I ate one-fourth of that and I'm sitting here buzzing.
Okay, if hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Not.